Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I know this is not the spot for me to be, but having a record last month's public hearing, to disconnect this podium is a disaster, I'm sorry. I have the microphone wired in, I'm just going to leave it here and I'm just going to stand here tonight with the kind of involvement that I like to call this public hearing to order. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the public leadings. And I'd like to ask you, we are sitting in public leadings.
The leadings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Would it please call on the room?
Curran.
Here.
Eded.
Here.
Nat.
Present.
Levy.
Present.
Seaberry. Stanley.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Cola.
Here.
Nagertet.
Present.
Hollis.
Here.
Cabo.
Present.
Sadi.
Present.
Biscotti.
Present.
Darcy.
Here.
Wetmore.
Present.
Nero.
Here.
Perkins.
Present.
Shanice.
Present.
Rotello.
Here.
Spazafaba.
Here.
Taisho.
Present.
With the record reflected by the twenty members present, Mr. Seaberry is out of town on family affairs. And I'll read the notice. The name of notice is given that the city of Danbury, City Council of the city of Danbury will hold a public hearing in which parties in interest and citizens will have the opportunity to be heard in relation to the following copies of the retail file and the state assistance and public inspections. Item one, entertainment license code of ordinance, section two dash six, eleven dash six, I'm sorry, and twelve dash thirty-four. Said public hearing will be held on Tuesday, the fourth of December, two thousand and twelve, at seven p.m. in the council chamber of City Bank, one fifty-five, Jerrit Avenue, Danbury Avenue, six eight one oh. It was attended by Jane Natale. And just for the members of the council, this public hearing, if time permits, we'll have a committee in the hall on this item immediately after, but if it gets too close to the council meeting, we'll go over to the council meeting at one fifty-seven and then add on a kind of a general, kind of a regular council agenda. Okay. The council is here to listen to folks tonight. If you feel some kind that you wish to address us, talk to us about this item. We're here to listen to you. We don't comment, we don't answer questions during this time, it's just our time to listen to you. And if you have a specific question, you certainly may ask it by looking at the microphone. And certainly someone will ask that question when you're going to the committee in the hall of the proper staff member. And we get that question, you hear that question answered, as soon as we're going to either the committee in the hall or the council meeting. Would you?
Please say your name.
Right, and I was wanting to...
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And we ask you, if you're not, if you please, would you state your name clearly for the record? And if we have an opportunity to spell it, or if the person doesn't understand it exactly, you just spell it for me. And I thank you for that. Okay. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council on entertainment license code of ordinance, section eleven dash six and twelve dash thirty-four? Sir?
My name is John Luyanado, L-U-Y-A-N-D-O. I represent three nightclubs in the Danbury area, plasma, tuxedos, and mambos. I just got to have you this, I really don't know much what it's about. I'll give you some time to look at this and have another look into this. I read it briefly, I feel that we're being sorted out for us, and I heard our business at the end of the day, it's, they say there will be, it's exempt, but I don't know what part of exempt it is, for new business, I think it's a good idea, but it's going to hurt us at the end of the day, and I just don't know much about this license, because we already paying the downtown tax, property tax, and everything, we just keep getting hit and hit with everything, and I just don't know much about this. And that's my feelings. All right, thank you.
Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the council on this item? Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Please? All right. I had a, just a momentary lapse, this is what I thought it was.
On wing walls are eighty-three, high and down, and you're tied to, I don't have time to read the whole thing, but I just want to make sure that the people that are going to be policing any of our parties or things that the licensees have are going to be hired by the licensees and not necessarily our police force, they should be paid for that same amount as not necessarily the tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Any other member of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll let you hear the motion with both the members.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Wishing to move Mr. Shad, seated by Mr. Taylor. All of them favor closing public hearings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody change? I'm going to ask the clerk, he said he didn't really vote, she's called to roll. Here.
Eded.
Here.
Nat.
Here.
Levy.
Present.
Seaberry. Stanley.
Here.
Taylor. Still here.
Cola.
Here.
Nagertet.
Present.
Hollis.
Here.
Cabo.
Present.
Sadi.
Sisom.
Biscotti.
Present.
Darcy.
Here.
Wetmore.
Present.
Nero.
Here.
Perkins.
Present.
Shanice.
Present.
Rotello.
Here.
Spazafaba.
Here.
Taisho.
Present.
Okay, with the record reflected by the twenty members present, the one that said Mr. Seaberry is out of town on new business. Okay. On the entertainment license code of ordinance, section eleven dash six and twelve dash thirty-four. The council will go in and we'll ask Mr. Cass and Remy if he would just give us a brief summary of the back here again.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
He's asking that you just back.
Just getting ready.
It's not a...
You can call me out on that if you want to.
I can, I can. It's a second one. I just turned on our...
It's just not a...
He's staying with the music, he knows.
I know how many lawyers like to stay over. I'll just tell you real quick, at my church, we hired a minister who was a lawyer of the common trade, confession as well, and he used to step out of the pulpit in dressed in jerseys every Sunday, and I used to tell him, I felt like I was in a jury box every Sunday.
The sermon's closing statement, sir. Checking summation, I have a summation here. It's on.
It's on.
Which way, Shepherd?
Okay. I know we've had a prior to the whole meeting, so I'll try to be brief. The purpose of the ordinance is to establish licensing requirements for entertainment establishments, which we find in the ordinance as establishments which provide amplified entertainment, and it's limited to the downtown revitalization zone. The background of this briefing is that, you'll remember that back in two thousand and three, two thousand and four, the zoning commission acted to prohibit bars and nightclubs from the downtown district because of issues that had arisen about security, noise, glitter, et cetera. Since then, the mayor, together with Downtown Partnership and Mr. Elburne, had listened to the issues raised by what I'll call the stakeholders in this process. The stakeholders are first, people like the gentleman who just spoke, who operate or wish to operate nightclubs in the downtown and now are prohibited from doing that. And then we also have the concerns of the restaurant owners, because their concerns that their patrons will be subjected to unreasonable noise, et cetera. So, we tried and drafted this ordinance to kind of reach a happy medium. One, to bring these establishments back into the downtown revitalization zone, recognizing that it is good for the downtown and the economy. But in the other, by the same token, to establish a licensing mechanism whereby people who own these establishments will have to adhere to certain minimum requirements about noise, limited noise, having security, preventing glitter, et cetera. And I should mention that the zoning commission has already passed, if I recall correctly, an amendment to the zoning regulations that would allow these establishments back downtown as cafes, is what they're called under the regulations. And that effective date of that regulation will be the same as the effective date of the council's adoption of this ordinance, should be deemed appropriate to adopt. Again, provisions are licenses required, there is an application fee of three hundred dol- I'm sorry, five hundred dollars for every three years, I believe. That fee is waived for existing establishments, so the existing establishments still have to come in and file an application for a license, and the planning department will fill out that form if you pass the ordinance. But recognizing that they've already done here, the drafters decided to recommend that you waive the fee for the existing downtown, for the first, for the first three years. As I said, it has restrictions on unreasonable noise, hours of operation, and by the way, at the last council meeting, committee meeting, you recommended, and we have changed the ordinance, there was a last call provision, I remember in the draft, and we took that out, and we made the hours of operation consistent with the hours of operation required by state statute. And it also provides for the establishment to provide for certain security, basically employees being posted at the doors and the entrances and the exits, to try to help maintain the peace and quiet of the neighborhood. And also has provisions requiring cleanup, anti-littering, et cetera. The enforcement of the ordinance is intended to be by citation, the citation hearing procedure, which is in twelve dash thirty-four of the code of ordinance, code ordinances, which are also being asked to amend tonight, to allow the police, the members of the unit, and the CEO, the owner enforcement officer, to have the authority to enforce the ordinance. But in addition to the citation mechanism, which allows for citations and penalties, modified penalties, this ordinance takes it up a little bit further by establishing provisions to, for suspension of the establishment's right to offer amplified music if it is found guilty of violating the license and the ordinance. And you'll see in the ordinance that there's successive, more punitive suspensions with each citation that you get over a certain period. And that's essentially...
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Taylor, Mr. Shad.
I'm not sure if you should press your anymore, Mr. Go ahead.
Oh, we want, oh, the pivot.
The president pivot.
Thank you. I would just like to echo Mrs. Waller's concern and members of our caucus last night, that we've been incurring over the past few years in downtown entertainment district, hundred fifty thousand dollars plus in police protection, and I would like to see that somehow reduced, whether we can do that in overall assessment to the people who are downtown. But we spent a hundred fifty thousand dollars to enforce a few nights, five hours down there with, or four hours with five policemen. I'd like to see that, see if we could somehow reduce that. Also, I've been in the restaurant business, personally not only restaurant, working in the restaurant business since the sixties, and I don't know if state regulations have changed, it's for a two o'clock closing on Sunday. I, the wording is not of model of clarity, both in the statute and in the ordinance. The ordinance is intended to track the hours of operation permitted by state statute. Well, I believe state statutes are earlier closing on Sunday, always have been, I can't speak to that with any clarity, but Sunday has always been an earlier closing than... You mean Sunday going into Monday morning? Yes. Yes, and the latest draft that you have before you can also provide, you have a one a.m. closing. No, it still says two a.m. on Sunday. No, there's an amended draft. Oh, I'm sorry. We clawed that and changed that. Okay. So, it's entirely consistent with the state statute. Okay, as long as we're consistent with the state, that was my concern, that we weren't operating outside of state, you don't, you don't listen to what we're doing, right? That was the committee's directive to me after the last minute, to make the hours of operation. Thank you, Ed. But, like I said, my main concern is that we find some way to mitigate police overtime in downtown. I believe in public safety, I believe in protecting our citizens, but I think there has to be some way that that cost is not borne by taxpayers, but borne by the people who are creating that problem in downtown. Thank you.
Mr. Shad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to segue off of what councilman Taylor was saying, and some members of the public, and also what I've heard, some concerns regarding the issue of the cost of security. This ordinance, so this ordinance has changed and it provides the tools that are downtown needs with minimal cost, if any, really, to the taxpayers in practical matter. Gives them a more dynamic environment in which to operate and lets entrepreneurs decide what's going to be best for them within the confines of the law. There are some issues of concern in that section F three regarding maintenance, design, and security. I just want to prove you, Mr. Chairman, to council, make sure for the purposes of legislative intent, that the issue of a private establishment can be required to maintain efficient and affirmative supervision and the conduct of the patron, whether it be inside, at the door, or just outside on the sidewalk, which I believe is stated right in the ordinance, that that is not intended in any way to conflict with any current collective bargaining agreements we have with our public safety departments, in particular the police department, and is to be consistent with any requirements under state law as it relates to the hiring either of private duty officers or any other persons in their place, should that be allowed. I just want to confirm that that's the intent of this language, and this language doesn't conflict with that statement.
Through the chair. Yes, Mr. Sadi, that is the intent, and the legislative history should reflect how you particularly phrased that concern, which is nothing in the ordinance is intended to conflict with any collective bargaining agreement or any other law to that effect. So, it's intended to basically allow employees or properly establishing to post employees at the doorstep, and it just continues. So, it's not intended to override any...
And finally, I'll incorporate my comments during the regular meeting by reference rather than restating everything for the record, so you can save time, but I just want to make sure that was in the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rotello?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'll do the chair, two votes down. Last time we were here, we heard some comments from the stakeholders that the synchronization of closing time is going to, the synchronization is earlier than the regular closing time goes for us, the city was going to put them in that domain to manage. I believe councilman Nap then suggested that we eliminate that provision.
You mean the last call provision?
Yeah, yeah, the last call. And I believe it was in there originally to somehow mitigate the instance of, what do we want to call this, disruptive behavior in the green when these kids all get out essentially at the same time. So, we've eliminated that, and I'm not sure if having the last call provision mitigates that behavior or not. But the question I have for you is, I don't necessarily see anything in this ordinance that is going to speak to that. We've heard now three different figures, like councilman Taylor mentioned a hundred fifty thousand. I think at the first public hearing, I heard two hundred thousand, I believe, for the police mayor. Now, I believe he was quoted in the newspaper saying that the police were, they really scored on them. So, whatever the figure is, a hundred thousand, two hundred, three hundred, it's too much. And is there anything in here that's going to mitigate the costs of the taxpayers? I know we've got a couple of guys on the door of these clubs, but the issue doesn't seem to be at the door or inside the club. The issue seems to be things that have spilled out after the clubs have closed and then take place in the downtown streets, and I don't see anything in here that speaks to that, so if you could, if you could help me on that, I'd appreciate it. I don't work there or anything, but...
I'll defer to that, I'm sure. And the issue of police officers uncovered to the overnight, as you know, as the overnight has, on Thursday, Fridays, Saturdays, has been in practice for about twenty, twenty-two years. We're evaluating that pretty much on a yearly basis and determining, is that the best use of our assets? Does that make the most sense in terms of being able to keep order downtown? The problem that we have now is that the club owners that are downtown are catering to the denominator that attracts, as you've all read, people that are frankly not necessarily going to behave in a manner that is really what we want there. What that does do is drive out other patrons who might go down there to see a band, they don't want to deal with the aggravation that they're having. So, in the long term, we're hoping that the license will help elevate those folks down there to offer a little bit better opportunity, a little bit better entertainment level, and potentially put themselves in a situation where we don't have to put cops right in the middle of the green every Friday, particularly Thursday and Friday night, which basically it was kind of... We can't really mandate, that's a policy decision made by the chief, we don't need that to make the ordinance, we can pull that back at any time. And the chief evaluates that with his command staff to decide whether or not we are potentially in a position to, you know, protect the public good and public safety by leaving them there. And we have from time to time lessened it, creased it, depending on what kind of activity is driving down. So, to answer your question, it probably wouldn't be necessarily something for the entertainment license, but certainly it would fit within this. Remember, we're creating a mechanism by which we're loosening regulations in the web, and we're creating a mechanism by which people can open a club. But it is a decision that the chief can make at any time, or, you know, you all can direct the chief to make that decision at any time. The other thing just to consider is, we are working hard on a civilian dispatch program. When we migrate to civilian dispatch, we have to reach a disguise, just our own civilianization plan. The contract says that we have to increase our manpower from ten eight, eight, ten, eight, to ten, twelve, ten on the overnight, meaning that I'll have extra cars already out there. So, we will automatically lessen our overtime costs, because I don't even have to bring in four guys plus a supervisor, I got three extra cars that we normally had, we can position them there if there is a problem. But we also can do more policing in the outskirts of the city. So, I definitely hear the value of that number, the reason the number fluctuates so much, by the way, depends on who's called in, it depends on the night, it depends whether it's a holiday, and you can range anywhere from a buck eighty a year up to, you know, three fifties, three seventies some years, depending on how we do that. And then I just want to address, one of the things about the license does do, even the businesses that are currently there, they're not only responsible for behavior inside the club, but they are responsible for behavior on both, on both sides of their door. They can't just stroke their hands and say, that's not my problem. So, if they're serving an underage person, if they're serving somebody who's clearly intoxicated, they're going to, they're going to be on the hook for that, both legally and in terms of their, of their license. That's the same model that's used in places with very vibrant nightlife, like San Francisco and other places that Dan and the team crafted that from. That's where they got the idea, even in New York City, that's what they do. So, we want to keep the, the good operators, we want to be able to keep evaluating that overtime, hopefully we can reduce that for a long haul, but, you know, we're trying to take big steps.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
To conclude here, I just want to get clarification, I just want to get a clarification on hours of operations, because I have two documents in front of me. One basically says nine to two, the entire, Monday through Sunday. And then I have another one piloted in yellow, saying nine to one, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday through Friday at nine to two, and Saturday at eleven to two, and Sunday at eleven to two. I described that Sunday as one o'clock. What? Where are you concerned?
The latest draft that was distributed to you tonight, it does say Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, nine a.m. to one a.m., nine a.m. to two a.m. on Saturday, and eleven a.m. to two a.m. on Sunday. We're trying to track the language of the liquor control statute, which is what you directed to us was the last time, but just as a matter of play, state of the street, what that means is that when they say hours of operation on Friday, that means on Friday night, it turns into Saturday morning. So, basically that means that they can stay open until two a.m. on Saturday morning, and they can stay open until, on Saturday, they can stay open until two a.m. on Sunday, but on Sunday night, which turns into Monday night, Monday morning, they have to go back to the bar. That's the intent of the state statute, which clarified that with the department, that's the intent of this, of this ordinance.
But I don't see that.
I understand it was handed out to...
Mr. Mayor? Want to highlight it? Just one here. So, so the web says eleven a.m. to two a.m. on Sunday, that's...
That's true.
Saturday.
That's the intent.
And this was the one that there was...
Is that the one that's highlighted?
This actually put public, they actually got this one?
No, that was a change, that was a change that we made, we realized that we didn't accurately track the state statute, so we made that change yesterday.
But was this that the public?
Well, the notice of the, the hearing was open to the public, that the ordinance itself, the draft ordinance, is not published.
Right, but if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Commissioner, when I made the motion at the November meeting, I asked you to pursue making the stack, the times consistent with the state of the control.
And that's what we...
That's the big issue here.
That's what we intend to do. Right, so, I understand your concern, if you worry about a notice issue, it was clear from the last public hearing that the intent was the maintenance hours consistent with state statute, so for that reason, we think it's proper.
Mr. Shad?
Just to take this point of clarification, even if we wanted to, we couldn't abrogate or overrule state statute on hours of operation.
Correct.
Two a.m. on Sunday means closing two a.m. Sunday morning, not rolling into Monday, closing two a.m. Monday morning, right? I think that's a confusion, councilman Taylor, councilman Eason, we found by state statute, this is consistent with that statute.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the council. So, basically, in this document, we are, and with all the zeal that we've spoken about, we're trying to not burden the taxpayers with extra costs for police. It basically comes down to what the mayor, I believe, said earlier, that with giving these considerations, we're basically hoping that the club owners will play up to that, do the nice thing, so that we will have less need for policemen. That basically, but there's nothing in it that's hard that says the future is all that.
Well, obviously, the intent is to treat the owners in good faith and hope that they will voluntarily comply, but the, the teeth in the ordinance is that if you don't, not only can the issue fine, so you can revoke your ability to provide an entertainment facility, but it does...
Mr. Chairman, is the best set without being...
I'm sorry?
Is the best set without being...
Sure. I know a lot of folks that get totally into the weeds about holdover and that this is designed to reduce the holdover, because it's really, now, that would be a great side effect if that happens, and that's what we would like to see happen, I think that's what will happen, but that's not why we wrote the entertainment license. We wrote the entertainment license because we have operators like Manny here who came to us who are responsible, who want to invest a million dollars into downtown, but say, your current regulations don't let a responsible owner operate a cafe, club, or cabaret. And I'm willing to do all of the things in this particular document.
I know a lot of folks that get totally into the weeds about holdover and that this is designed to reduce the holdover, because it's really, now, that would be a great side effect if that happens, and that's what we would like to see happen, I think that's what will happen, but that's not why we wrote the entertainment license. We wrote the entertainment license because we have operators like Manny here who came to us who are responsible, who want to invest a million dollars into downtown, but say, "Your current regulations don't let a responsible owner operate a cafe, club, or cabaret." And I'm willing to do all of the things in this particular document, because that's the way, for you old timers up there, that Tuxedo Jones who used to operate, when we used to go there in the eighties and nineties, right? And I mean, Ron and Rick Jowdy ran a great operation, and they're abided by the liquor laws, and they made sure their vouchers were there, and they kept the exterior clean, and they didn't blast music on the outside, and they didn't harass people walking by. That's what we're trying to get back to, but we need a mechanism to ensure that these folks are who they say they are, and they're gonna do what they say they're gonna do. And what we had, when we had the Horizon incident a couple of years ago, if you remember, we had an operator go in there that we really couldn't stop by any legal way. And I probably spent, with a little disrespect to Mr. Cassandini, the city probably spent 20 to 25,000 dollars of taxpayer money, going to court for a month and a half to get these folks to do, stop doing what they were doing, which is operating an illegal business, which was, uh, doing everything you're not supposed to do as a club owner, and jeopardizing the public's safety and welfare, health and welfare of our residents. So, this allows us a tool to distinguish who's real, who's serious, and who isn't. Who's just trying to take advantage of us, throw up in a club, do some internet advertising, create a complete disaster, and then walk away and say, you know, "I never really had a lease, and I really don't care what happens to the pages design." So, uh, if they were to operate that way, the entertainment license could be pulled, there's a hearing, there's an appeal process, you know, you can't just shut somebody down overnight. But we have much more leverage than what we would have now, which is really now. So, that's really where the genesis was for this. Now, the holdover, if we can get that number down, that'd be great. And I think in the end, we'll be able to do that, because we have more responsible people operating, and the people who are operating down here will now be able to understand.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. My, uh, I just, I have a motion here that I want to make, so that we can, please close this off. Before I do, I just have one thing to say, is that I, in 2004, when this downtown area first came before us, it came before zoning, I was the chairman of zoning back then, and just like tonight, where we had, many of us concerned here on the panel, we were concerned back then, we tried to do our best to create what we thought was a guideline to work with downtown, to help curb some problems. Uh, I think the mayor, we know the mayor said it, the way that most of us are feeling it, is in fact, we know there's an issue down there, we know, I think all 21 of us agree, that there's a lot of money being spent on the police force down there that we would hope this is gonna help us with. Six months from now, if we find out that this didn't help us, that the numbers are still tracking the same way that they were, we'll probably be back there again, adding to these ordinances. So, uh, I just wanted to make that statement. I'll make a motion for the discussion, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, receive the communication and amend the Code of Ordinance, to add Sections 11-6, entertainment licenses, and to amend subsection 12-34 citations as presented.
Has that been made, considering my Mr. Shadi?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, for the record, is the recommendation to the council a whole?
That is so noted.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Do you want to run with discussions on that, or do we want to wait till we get it to the council agenda at the meeting? Set, do you want me to go on? Mr. Chairman, do you want to say something?
I just wanted to make sure that Dan and I stick around.
Okay. We shall be there. Anything else? Say another, I'm trying to remind, to all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, any opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, motion's had. Mr. Chair, your unanimous vote. This time, I'll only say a motion to close the committee as a whole. So, votes have been made by Mr. Perkins, the second by Mr. Negashet. All of you in favor, opposed, committed, the whole signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion, very unanimous. Close. Okay, this time, I would like to, uh, call the, uh, meeting to order. Um, if you would please stand, and, uh, I will ask Deputy Chief Shanahan to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I ask Chief Carr to please lead us in prayer.
As many Americans prepare to celebrate the Christmas holidays, let us recall the unspoken words of John F. Kennedy from November 22nd, 1963. "We ask divine providence that we may be worthy of our power and responsibility, that we may exercise our strength with wisdom and restraint, and that we may achieve in our time and for all time the ancient vision of peace on earth, goodwill towards man. And to all those who serve to defend our way of life, we pray God protects them and their families. We must never forget that the highest appreciation is not through utter words, but through live by them. As we begin this meeting, we ask your wisdom of God. Amen."
Thank you, Chief Carr. Will the clerk least of all?
Chairman? Can that?
Present.
Dan?
Present.
Levy?
Present.
Seaberry? Stanley?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Kola?
Here.
Negashet?
Present.
Darcy?
Here.
Alice?
Here.
Cabo?
Present.
Zadi?
Present.
Biscotti?
Present.
Whitmore?
Present.
Nero?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
Sheeney?
Present.
Rotella?
Here.
Gadsen-Palmer?
Present.
Teichel?
Present.
Okay, there being plenty of present, we'll have some, let the record reflect that. Councilman Seaberry, the downtown and family business. First 30 minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. Any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening must address an item that is specifically on the agenda, and they must be a resident and are a taxpayer of the city of Danbury. I will allow a little latitude this evening, if anybody wants to address the entertainment license, in anticipation that it'll probably be, uh, added on for the agenda if this component of the council is willing, uh, to grant that, see the objection. So, with that, we'll open up for, uh, public speaking. Any member of the public wish to address the council? Uh, Mr. Bishop?
Like the entertainment license, I was anticipating that you put 15 Main Street back on the agendas at some time.
You're welcome to address that issue tonight, even though it's technically on the table, but...
Okay, um, I thought maybe you'd be taking it off the table later.
You just might.
Several people have asked me, um, what books I have up here. The bible of books about Danbury history is James Montgomery Bailey's book that he wrote in 1898, and that has several references to that house at 15 Main Street as the replacement house after Mr. McLean was able to come back in 1803. They ran away after Danbury was burnt, because he had been the connoisseur of stores, and so the British were looking for him, and he did not come back until the war was over. I also had with me July 5th, 1979, and July 6th, 1979, from the Danbury News Times, um, Mayor Donald W. Bowden will ask the council to consider an offer by the Preservation Associates of Danbury to buy the Ives Street Firehouse. The mayor will also ask the council to authorize the purchase of the property at 15 Main Street to provide a Main Street driveway to South Street School. In a letter, the mayor said, "Stalling the driveway will not require demolition of the early 19th century house on the lot, a house designated by the Danbury Preservation Trust as historically significant." The purchase price was 130,000, and that was taken out of the school bond issue for, for, um, that year. Mr. Walker rightly pointed out that, I didn't want to say Mayor Bowden, because it was confusing, but it wasn't Mayor Dieter, as I told you last time, my maiden state, but these two things confirm it was Donald Bowden who, who, um, did these things. The next story does tell you about the referendum and, and the expenses to doing that. And, um, please check Bailey's book before you make a decision. He isn't always right, but he's close to being right always. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is any, uh, other member of the public wish to address the council?
Hi. I'm Lynn Walker, 83 Highland Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut. Uh, first, I want to wish y'all a Merry Christmas, or whatever your holiday is, just have happy holidays and have safe, happy holidays for all of you. I'd like to see y'all back here in January. Two, I'd like to thank the Rotella family for the donation to the fire in the police department. I thought it was very kind of you, I don't know if you had a hand in it, but anyway, it's a very nice gesture, especially at this time of year. And since Margaret was allowed to address the house, I wanted to just say a couple quick things about it. Um, I'm not, I'm sure in your wisdom, you're gonna figure out what to do, and that will verify by whatever you decide, but I wanted to share an experience with you. My family came over in 1632 in Water Town, Mass, and when I did my genealogical history, I found that out, I went to Water Town, Mass, and I was able to find out, in the city itself, there were records of him and of his family and of his house, and he was actually a selectman of Water Town, and I went through the books and saw his signature and that sort of thing, 300 years after he died. We found his grave, and we found 11 of the children of that family, it was Captain Hugh Mason. And I found a book in the Genealogical Society in Boston that traced from him down to my grandmother, so that I know the direct line straight on down. I'm sure there are other McLean residents out there, or descendants or whatever, that would like to come back and look through the records and find some of this stuff. And you all make decisions about whether things stay in the city or not, but it was very interesting, and it was very moving to me to find that out, so be wise with what you do. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Any other members? Yes.
Chris Orfichi, I agree. One more to the road, back to you. I just learned today at 1:30 that, uh, we, there was a response from the airport manager, Mr. Estefan, to our request to the restaurant at the airport. This is spite of Mr. Estefan having had conversations with my attorney just this past Friday, and, uh, so it was a surprise to find out that we do have to be here tonight, so if we had three or four hours, we need to process this, what's happening, what's really been across it. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I respectfully request that, uh, an ad hoc committee be assigned, and that it include a commission member, and one of the commission members that unanimously approved our application for this, um, so that we will have an opportunity to thoroughly review and respond to Mr. Estefan's report, which we believe has left out many critical facts, and is not, uh, clear.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Any other members of the public? Seeing now then, we'll move on with our, uh, regularly scheduled meeting. There are a couple of announcements that I'd like to just remind everybody. City Councilman Tom Sonny's birthday is not December 13th, we do this for the last 11 years, it is December 14th, so happy birthday, Tom. City Councilman Greg Seaberry's birthday is December 13th, but he's in California, so don't pick my flaws or anything. Happy birthday, Greg, if you're watching this. Uh, and City Councilman Shane Agers' birthday is on December 20th, happy birthday, Councilman. It is a very busy month, I just want to point out a couple of quick events for you. The Nutcracker Annual Ballet at Danbury High School is this weekend, Friday, 7:30, Saturday, 6:00 PM, and Sunday at 3:00 PM. Feel free to stop by, it's a wonderful performance, usually sold out, get your tickets now, um, generally, there's a lot of folks who want to go there, go there. December 12th at 7:30 AM is the Danbury Life Club has their annual Crisp Radio Breakfast at the Amber Room. Again, another worthy cause, if you attend, the members of the public watching tonight, I contend that would be greatly appreciated. And on Friday, December 14th at 11:30, is the Annual Greater Danbury Chamber of Commerce Privacy Luncheon. They're honoring Ethan Allen, CEO, Baruch Ahlari, and also, that is the State of the City speech that's annually given each year to, uh, update, uh, the residents on where we stand in a variety of different issues. So, these are by no means all the events, uh, this month, there are a ton of things going on, um, and you're welcome to check in with Lisa in my office, PJ, and they can update your, Wayne, and they can update you on what the latest and the greatest is. Then we'll cover our announcements for this evening. Mr. President, can we have the minutes, please?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we read the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the legislative assistants' office.
First made by Mr. Calvo, second by Mr. Negashet, there are any licenses corrections or additions to the minutes as presented. Seeing none, now try your minds on acceptance, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. As have most of the carries, you know, so just want to remind the council that we are in beta test, if you will, of our new system, our software system for the council, um, and we are in the process of shaking out the system, so it'll be sloppy once in a while, just so that we can get a handle on entry everything, uh, in terms of going to minutes. We're also in beta testing on live streaming, uh, which we hopefully will roll out in January, we think we're pretty well ready to go with that. We are still working, Frank, on the voting system, uh, which will allow your votes to be recorded on the screen up there on both sides. So, uh, this, this, we decided to break this out on basis, because it's pretty complicated, so, uh, at this point, we're just doing the, the data entry and formatting the minutes, and then we'll roll that out next month. Mr. McNapp, the legislative leader, can I have the, can send Calvert, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. Before I jump in, just one question on the Nutcracker Ballet, are you starting that again?
I am, yes. Friday night and Sunday, I am, again, reprising my role as Mother Ginger, and then brand new bustier. I encourage you to attend that wonderful production, this is my 15th year of reprising my role, I'm very excited. I've got to be a little bit of a diva, I listen out now for the performance, but it's pretty, uh, pretty exciting, so, thank you, Mr. McNapp.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Your Honor. Can send Calvert, December 4th, 2012. Number two, receive the communication and approve the appointment of Councilmembers Phil Curry, Paulie Stanley, and Paul Rotella to the Government and Peace Commission. Also approve the reappointment of Citizens Alan T. Vois and Marques Corre to the panel. Number three, receive the communication to approve the appointment of Peter Jennings as a member of the Conservation Commission, with a term to expire July 1st, 2015. Number seven, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark DeBout to apply for and accept funding of 13,000 dollars, which will allow the city of Danbury to extend its summer youth employment program. The additional funding from the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board will bring the total funding for the Danbury Youth Services to 110,900 dollars for the 2012, 2013 school year youth employment program. And number nine, receive, report, and adopt the resolution and deferral agreement as recommended by the ad hoc committee to approve a tax deferral for office and retail uses in accordance with the Code of Ordinance, Section 18-25, per PM Danbury LLC for property at Two National Place.
Thank you, uh... Mr. Legislative Leader, what's your pleasure, council?
Oh, Mrs. Plushes. I, I just, I have to just share this with the council, I'm watching Mr. Biscanti use an iPad, this is...
He already stood, he can't see the...
Yeah, I gotta get a picture, so...
Where'd he go, Mr. Lee?
He's next, Lee.
All right, excuse me, Mr. Calvert, you know?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept a consent calendar as presented.
Second. Mr. Post, second by Mr. Perkins. He changes the consent calendar. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on acceptance. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have, opposed carries, unanimous. Madam Clerk, I have one, please. Uh, Mr. Perkins.
Communication, lease at 35 Main Street or Price Right. Members of the City Council, for many months, we have interacted with both the owner of the 21, 29 through 41 Main Street property, as well as their potential tenant, Price Right Supermarkets, to a process culminating with a long-term lease between the two parties. The reintroduction of a new grocery store at this site, soon to be known as Price Right Plaza, will be a positive addition to the southern end of Main Street. I am confident that you will agree that this is a much-needed retail outlet for residents of the area. I guess that you will approve the accompanying lease between the city and Price Right for use of the parking lot on city-owned property adjacent to the site as of September 2012, contingent upon approval by the planning commission at their next scheduled session. Sincerely, Markievally May.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, what's your pleasure, Council?
I'm Mrs. Stanley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion, receive the communication, and approve the terms of the lease between the city and Price Right for use of parking lot on CEO property adjacent to the site as a contingent upon approval by the planning commission.
Second. Thank you, Your Motion. Second by Mr. Biscotti. Any discussion related to the lease, the early extension of the lease and Price Right? Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm glad to see, I'm sure, many residents will be happy to see that store in operation. And the $5 million that the Shop Right and the Shop Price Right is putting into making our Main Street look better is a great thing. And they also made a handsome donation to the Historical Society of $7,500 to prove that they are conscientious corporation in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I got another tenant coming in real soon, too. Can't tell you right now. Any other discussion? Mr. Sheehan.
Thank you, Your Honor. Corporation Council, doesn't this lease need to go through a public hearing of this property?
This one doesn't, because the lease is still, the old lease to this property is still actually valid. So there's exemption in the law for public hearing and posting, that you have the lease or disposition of property the same manner it's presently being used, and as follows in that category.
And the terms are exactly the same, are these matters?
The terms are not the same with property, that being used is exactly the same, and that's the relevant issue for purposes of the public hearing and that.
Not the property itself.
Yes, the use, not the property.
It's the property and the use.
Further discussion. Mr. Biscotti.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the opportunity to speak to a gentleman representing Price Right at a press conference, and really informed us all that they're going to be very community-oriented, and to reach out to the community, different organizations, food pantries, the Thursday House, and so on. And I think approving this lease shows them that we are also doing our part, too, to get them to come here. Also, I've talked to several people that have visited their stores in and around the state of Connecticut, and they have nothing but good to say about this. I'm glad to support it, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Biscotti. Further discussion related to the Price Right lease. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have, opposed carries, unanimous. Madam Clerk, I have two and three, or I consent. I have four, please.
Communication, donation to Fire and the Police Department. Dear Mayor Bowden, on behalf of a grateful family, please accept this donation of $1,000 to be divided equally between the City of Danbury's Fire Department and the Police Department in an unrestricted fashion for use as they see fit. Our family was deeply impressed by the courage, professionalism, and sensitivity displayed by the men and women of these agencies during a terrible event earlier this year. Please express our profound appreciation to them as well. Sincerely, the Rotellas.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Lee.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation, credit the appropriate line items, and send a letter of thanks to the Rotella family for their most generous expression of appreciation.
Second. Oh, is somebody over there with him? Mr. Sheehan, is it? Okay, or is that? Was that Mr. Scott? Mr. Scott, is that him? Was that you? Any discussion related to this generous donation? Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to express my appreciation to Paul Rotella and his family. I had the opportunity about a week ago to meet with Paul and a constituent regarding the property issues, on property that, on the street in Danbury, that I also own a property on. I just have to say, I was very impressed with Mr. Rotella's knowledge, depth of knowledge, and his concerns for the property owners, and I wish we had more landlords like him in the town. Thank you, Paul. Thank you personally.
Thank you. Here, here. Well done. Other discussion related to this generous donation? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, motion carries, unanimous. Madam Clerk, I have five.
Communication, conveyance of traffic light easement for Sugar Tunnel Road.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Without any help from any electronic devices, I would like to refer this to item five, Corporation Council, Planning Department, and the City Engineer for Reports. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no objection, that is so ordered. Madam Clerk, item six, please.
Communication, request for store extension 39 Hospital Avenue and 3/4.
What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Whitmore.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to the City Engineer and the Planning Commission for Orders.
Thank you, Councilman Whitmore. Seeing no objection, it is so ordered. Item seven was not consent. Madam Clerk, item eight, please.
Report, DXR Holding, Northford Road.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Council? Mr. Currie.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an Ad-Hoc Committee consisting of Corporation Council, the Airport Administrator, and the head of the background.
An Ad-Hoc Committee shall consist of the following. Mr. Nap will sit in the chair, Councilman Calvo, and Councilman Rotella. Item nine was consent. Item 10, you want to do the department reports as far as ago, or you're filling the MLPA Council, or you want to skip all of that? Mr. President, department reports, please.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the department reports, as all members have copies, and copies are filed in the Legislative Assistant's Office.
Second. Mr. Wade, second by Mr. Eggers, and I'll entertain discussion under department reports at this time. Mr. Taylor.
I'd just like to echo my own personal feelings, and I'm sure the feelings of every member in the Council, and the City of Danbury, for every city department that showed dedication and hard work during the storms we had. And it just goes to show where the dedicated staff we have in the town. And I appreciate it personally, and I'm sure every member of this Council, and the city also appreciates that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Taylor, further discussion related to department reports. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds on acceptance of those reports. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, signify by saying nay. Ayes have, opposed carries, unanimous. I believe we are entertaining two add-ons tonight, actually, one add-on. And this is done, and then we have a table item, so we'll label the table item number 11. I'll stand a motion related to the table item from the last week. Mr. Calvo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, at this time, make a motion to take from the table item number two from the November 19th, 2012 special City Council meeting.
Second. Number eight, second by Mr. Sadi. All those in favor are taking from the table. We're not voting for the item, we're just taking it off the table to discuss. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, signify by saying nay. Okay, back to table motions on item 11. Mr. Calvo.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the November 19th meeting, when I tabled this item, I had asked the Urban Council's Office if they would do a certain number of things that were in my reason for tabling it. I was informed this week, and it is obvious, that doing that from the 19th to the 4th is not enough time for the Corporation Council to get its work done. And the Urban Council's Office has asked me if I could just extend this. So at this time, I'm going to make a motion to table this item, pending the information from the Corporation Council's Office that's satisfactory to the Council.
Second. Mr. Wade, second. And Mr. Rotella, no discussion on a motion to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, motion carries, unanimous. So item two from the November 19th, 2012, agenda remains stable for further consideration and adjournment. At this time, I'll entertain item 13, add-on. Mr. Calvo.
I'm sorry. This time, I'd like to make a motion to add on item number 12, which is the Code of Ordinances of the City of Danbury, 11-6 and 12-34, currently known as the Indian Rights and Support List.
Motion's been made and seconded to have this on to the agenda. If you're just voting to add on the agenda, at this point, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition, motion carries, unanimous. Item is added to the agenda. Mr. Calvo.
Your Honor, I'll also make a motion at this time to read the reading of the minutes of the public hearing. It's very interesting. We're all just here.
Any objections? Seeing none, then I'll hold on. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on that particular item, label it item 12, entertain the voices. I'm sorry, Mr. Nap.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to receive the communication and amend the Code of Ordinances to add Section 11-6 Entertainment Licenses and to amend subsection 12-34 citations.
Second by Mr. Perkins. Discussion under this particular item. Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. This one's with the Committee of the Hall, keep my comments very short. Again, just want to read it, I think this helps our downtown, at a minimal cost to taxpayers. The administrative hearing process and suspension of license that Your Honor outlined is very important to have, is some tool that we don't have right now at the enforcement. And then just finally, Your Honor, I'd like to incorporate my reference comments, and those of Attorney Casagrande that were made during the Committee of the Hall, specifically regarding Section F3 regarding the legislative intent purposes, and nothing in the order shall be interpreted to conflict with current collective bargaining agreements and state law related to the provision of any private duty officers as it relates to safety or security outside of premises.
Thank you. Mr. Sadi, I think the record is right, so we'll review your comments. Other discussions related to entertainment? Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Apparently, we did a very good job, this Council, writing this whole ordinance out between last month and this month, because really the only thing I did left with today was the, a little bit on the Times and some of the police protection. Three, Your Honor, two, Detective, or I'm sorry, Deputy Chief Shanahan. Question for you. This may be a difficult question to answer. Based on the current level of patrolmen in that downtown area, is there any way for you to tell or determine the level of drawdown? Let's just say this ordinance works exactly the way we visioned it to. Is there any way that you can give us an idea of the drawdown of forces that would be down in that particular area?
I don't think I could forecast that for you. Our work is very, very fluid. It really depends on the night, the situation, and what's going on, and what's running through.
What about if you, I mean, this doesn't match, so we need to show up in your department reports, but maybe give us a phone number, and from time to time, just let us see what that number looks like over time, so we can just kind of have a baseline or a basis?
Yeah, I don't see where that would be necessary.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Perkins. Further discussion related to this issue? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Nap.
Thank you, Your Honor. If there was someone here that could just give us an idea of what type of nightclub this is going to be, and what the operations will be.
Well, Manny, you want to just talk a little bit about your club? This applies to all, it's not just one club. Would it be, might you just talk a little bit about what your vision is, or what your period is?
Good evening, Manny Carreras, 121 Deer Avenue, also 20 White Street property owner. What we intend to introduce to the downtown district is something that hopefully sets a new standard, raises the bar, if you will, invites responsible operation of nightclubs and restaurants back to the district. We get a lot of backlash, I get a lot of people that say I'm crazy. Why am I not going to Mill Plain? Why am I doing this downtown? There's no hope for the district. I disagree wholeheartedly. I believe 1,000%, not 100% that this will be successful. And we're going to carry that torch, and we're going to bring the neighborhood back. And in doing so, we promise to not serve minors, we promise to mitigate difficult situations before they become the responsibility of the Police Department or a financial weight to the city as a whole. It's a risky business, there's no doubt about it. When you mix alcohol with patrons, things can happen. But there are numerous ways you can intercept that before it becomes a volatile issue, before it becomes violent, before it becomes nuisance. And most of that is done preemptively if you're running your operation cleanly. And that's the example we want to set. So our particular business model calls for a restaurant and lounge, a restaurant pub, excuse me, on the first floor, and the second floor, two-floor building, will be used only on Fridays and Saturdays to the public as a lounge space, or a nightclub, if you will. But the rest of the week will be available for rentals and for private functions that we want to throw for people in need. So we're going to throw a lot of benefits upstairs and try to commit to the community in that regard. And that's our alternative marketing plan. Rather than doing traditional radio ads and such, we're going to invest in our community of Danbury. And in doing so, we hope to build some bridges and some bonds that pay dividends down the road, as well as they pay immediate dividends as doing the right thing. That's my gist of what we're trying to do.
Sir, then, what type of security would, I mean, would you be introducing for the public?
Well, Friday and Saturday nights upstairs, where it's more of a traditional nightclub environment, will have a heavy security presence, and professional security, not college football players that want to beat people up. It's not where I'm at. Yeah, they can also be the instigators rather than the protectors in some situations, if they're not trained properly. Our staff, our servers, and our security staff will be well, well-trained, continuously trained, to recognize the signs of over-serving, aggressive behaviors and such. So I take a lot of pride in the fact that I know we're going to provide a safe environment for our patrons, as well as, I think we're going to intercept some problems on the street that will have the problem getting involved in as well, to help clean up, if you will.
Is there, is there any height requirement to be secure? Bring your iPad. Any other discussions? Seeing none, then, thank you, Manny, appreciate you, Your Honor. You know, I speak on behalf of the Council, you're just one person that wants to apply for this. I thought we were going to get rid of that kid.
We need it back tonight. Please loosen it.
We're going to get a dual system here, as I said. But I just want to, you know, thank you on behalf of the City of Danbury, the Council for, you know, rolling up your sleeves. Not only did you buy a spot downtown, you also bought a house in Deer Hill. And, you know, you really believe in the city. And we need more Mannys, Carreras in the city to be able to not just talk to talk, to walk the walk. So you're going to help you become successful. I can speak to the entire Council, we'll have the first parties down there to celebrate your
the grand opening, and hopefully this will be the start of more investment in that particular area, so, good job.
Any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, I'll try your minds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have a motion carries. I'll be happy to sign your Entertainment License as soon as our 3D reading comes. Okay, a couple things, just want to extend off committees, I'll take a moment to wish everybody very healthy, happy holiday season, a great year. I also want to welcome, as favor, the candidate, David Arcani, in the back, and appreciate him coming out tonight as well. And just so you're all aware, we did lose, during this month, we did lose one of our police officers, a man who volunteered firefighting with many years. Jim Holby passed away on his way to the Seabees, so certainly, our thoughts at first go to his family, and everybody around him, we thank him for his dedication for our great city. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Sadi. All in favor, adjourn. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, we are adjourned.
Hello, I'm Jeff Harold, Chief of the Danbury Fire Department. Today, I'd like to speak to you about some home fire safety tips. As we move into the holiday season, there's a number of concerns that are raised for the regular use of decorations, and concerns with extension cords, for example. I would please remind you that all extension cords must be plugged in to a single outlet and must be used properly. Overuse of extension cords, drawing too many things through one plug, can cause a house fire. In addition, use of decorations, such as lights, wiring, decorative ornaments and such, must be maintained in such a way that they are perfectly safe to use. Please inspect all such items before you hang them or use them for the holiday season. Check for wiring, check the plugs, be sure that all lights are securely seated in their sockets. Another concern for the fire service at this time of the year is the use of space heaters. Under Connecticut State statutes, space heaters are not allowed in multifamily homes, so if you live in an apartment house, please do not use a space heater. If you live in a single-family or two-family home, and you elect to use a space heater, please be sure to read all manufacturer's suggested use and directions. At all times, do not place anything combustible anywhere close to these space heaters. They can get very warm, and they do indeed cause fires. Do not use them for drying clothes, or in any case, put them too close to combustibles such as curtains or furniture. Another concern that we have is being sure that everyone has a working smoke detector on all levels of your home. These detectors need to be checked for use by battery or AC power. Please be sure that these are in good working order. Do not paint these, or in any way cover them, or disable them by removing their batteries. This is very important. With regards to smoke detectors, it is also important to remember that like any mechanical device, a smoke detector has a lifespan. If your smoke detectors are older than 10 years old, the USFA, the United States Fire Administration, suggests that you replace the detector, take it out and dispose of it, and purchase a new one. During the 10 years, technology has changed so that the new detectors are far better. Indeed, some of them have batteries that are five or 10 years long and will not need maintenance. Please, check your smoke detectors. A final note that I'd like to make is while you are out shopping and buying gifts, please be sure to check to make sure that you are not buying a gift that may cause a problem. Some gifts, as you know, can yield small parts, and children, especially toddlers, tend to put a lot of these things into their mouths, and they can cause a choking hazard. Please be very sure to check these items as you buy them for gifts for your family. When using candles during the holiday season, we recommend that candles only be used in an occupied room. When you go out, blow them out. Don't leave a candle burning. As a final note, this coming season is going to be full of joy, family gatherings, and get-togethers. We want you to have a safe and happy holiday season. Please remember that the Danbury Fire Department and our Community Risk Reduction Team is there to help you with information, pamphlets, or to help you decorate your home safely. Please be sure to give us a call at 203-796-1550. Once again, Jeff Harold, the Chief of the Danbury Fire Department, and all the men and women here, stand ready to serve and respond. However, the fewer times that we respond, the safer you are. Thank you very much.